Call the Eastline Board of Selectmen to order. This is a regular meeting of November 18th, 2020.
Did you want to add to that executive session? Or do you want to wait till we get to the end?
We can add it, you know, if the meeting's short enough. Nothing pressing, but we have a few items.
Okay.
Thank you. Today is November 18th. It, you know, with COVID not being a short term thing, it turns out. It looks like it's going to be with us for a while. And so are these new meetings. Let's call for a pledge of allegiance. We've been kind of not doing that, but we should bring it back into the regular moments of the meeting here. So if you all join in, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. To the republic of which it stands. One nation, under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible, with liberty, justice, and the cross.
Not good.
Maybe in the future, Mark, it wouldn't be a bad idea for the, maybe the person leading the meeting to everyone stand and that person recites it. So it doesn't sound like a Christmas dinner with 40 people around the table.
Or maybe I'll have the deputy do it. Additional agenda and consent items? I don't think there are. Yes, I guess we could add on to the agenda. I'd like to go to executive session at the end, just the selectmen to talk about a real estate situation and a personnel matter.
Okay, so 7A, I'll move to add under, make 7A executive session to discuss real estate and personnel issues.
Paul Daigle, second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Okay, then we'll go to delegations. Would anyone like to speak to the commission, the board of selectmen this evening? And if so, you could wave into the camera. You could raise your electronic hand or you could just speak up. Mr. Mingo, I saw your hand. You are muted.
You're muted, Joe.
There you go.
May you all have a happy, happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. Would anyone else like to speak to the board of selectmen this evening under public delegations?
Yeah, Mr. Nickerson, I would love to speak. It's Irving Steele here. How are you?
Good. You have the floor.
Yeah, and I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that Mr. Nickerson is our elected first selectman, as you all know in town. And I find it appalling that someone in his position, with his background and experience, goes after someone in our town to attack them both on their condition as well as attacking their family. And you might be wondering, what am I talking about? Over the course of elections, of course, people get excited and tempers are flaring, all this kind of stuff. Mr. Nickerson sent me a message calling my mother a piece of shit. Did everyone hear that?
Yeah, we heard you vulgarity.
Okay.
Is that your?
That was coming from, that was coming from Mr. Nickerson. So he called my mother Kate Steele.
You don't need to say it again.
This is from Mr. Nickerson, who is our elected first selectman in town, who retweets stuff from the Trump family, who continues to retweet stuff online about hatred against minorities, against different people of different backgrounds. And we have him as our elected official in town, and he has no public response to this, no public apology to me nor my family. And I just think it's really important that, especially in this time, Mr. Nickerson brought up, this is a pandemic, we should say the pledge. I mean, what are the last lines of the pledge? Can you repeat that for me, Mr. Nickerson?
Is that your statement, sir?
I'm asking for you to repeat the last line of the pledge, Mr. Nickerson.
Irving, I'll speak on Mr. Nickerson's behalf here. We don't allow dialogue in public delegations.
I think this is a unique situation, Mr. Siri. Do you not agree with me? Is it acceptable at all to anyone on the board of selectmen that our leader of town acts just in line with this president who has completely destroyed our country? And he's calling people in town pieces of shit?
Okay, enough.
Okay, I agree. Thank you, Mr. Steele. Anybody else like to speak?
Mr. Daigle, can you please respond to that?
Again, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to boot you out of the meeting if you, if you don't stay muted, sir. We're going to go on to our meeting. Approval of minutes, regular meeting of November 4th, 2020.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 4th, 2020, as submitted.
Second, Mark Salerno.
That was Kevin Siri in moving it.
Any changes, corrections? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstain? Consent calendar. Kevin, you have a whopping consent calendar tonight.
Oh, yeah. Moved, this Kevin Siri moved to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of November 18th, 2020, in the amount of $4.96.
Second, Mark Salerno.
Mr. Salerno seconds it. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. New business, authorize the expenditure from the parahouse account. Mrs. Wilson's here tonight, director of our senior center. Hi, Kathy. You are muted. And could you unmute yourself? If you're on a phone, you hit star six. If you're on a computer, you just got to figure out how to do it. And how to do it, there's three dots in your little square. Or down at the bottom, there's a mute and unmute button.
I got it, I got it, I got it. You can hear me, right?
Yes, we can. So as, as we all know, as selectmen, we go through the process of approving parahouse account expenditures after they come through the council of agents. So could you explain what the, the need is and what we're approving tonight?
So I wrote a grant a couple, 18 months ago, 24 months ago, to get a new vehicle for the senior center. It's through the 5310 grant through Connecticut DOT. It was approved. The town portion is 49,600, excuse me, whoa. The town portion is 12,400. The DOT portion is 49,600. But there were a few things that we wanted to add to it that the, the commission had indicated the parahouse would pay for. We didn't have the exact figure until about March of this year, and we weren't able to have our commission meeting because that, it was right around when COVID hit. So we ended up getting the approval from our commission via email. And then once we were able to all come back together again, which was September, we approved the actual amount of the expenditure from the parahouse accounts, which is the difference between the total purchase price of the vehicle and what the DOT and the town would pay for. And that's 7971. And we're just doing the formal approval tonight because the bus should be delivered sometime mid.
You're muted, Mark. Thank you. So, so this is the, the town share of the bus?
This is the parahouse share of the bus. You, we've already, we did sort of the, the town share, but we didn't know the exact figure. And then when we found out that's the exact figure, we were, we were out of, out of place because of COVID and coming to meetings, so.
And are there any questions?
This Kevin Siri, I was going to say, I'll put a motion out and then, this Kevin Siri, I move to authorize the use of $7,971 from the parahouse account for the difference between the final cost of $76,971 and the previously authorized amount of $69,000 of the new senior center vehicle.
Second, Mark Salerno.
Mr. Salerno seconds it. Are there any questions? This is an outstanding program that we, when we put an application in, we, we don't do it every year, we do it as needed. Mrs. Wilson does an outstanding job of actually filling out this grant. And I'm part of the council of government, you know, leadership. And, and we see these applications come through and Eastline shines year after year when we do put them in, the good job that you do. So.
Thanks, Mark.
At these things, we do. I mean, it's amazing the, the number of points we get on that weighted scale. So congratulations on getting the bus for our seniors. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Are there any abstain? Terrific. Next on our new business agenda is appointment of boards and commissions in the wetlands has, as a vacancy, as we've talked about. It is up to the board of selectmen to make that, fill that vacancy. And there's open for motions, I suppose, and nominees.
This Kevin Siri, I'll move to appoint Doreen Ryan, apply of Irvingdale Place Eastline, as a member of the inland wetlands agency with a term to expire on January 8th, 2024. She's currently serving as an alternate.
This is Mark Salerno, I will second that.
Emotions, a second. Is there, well, is there any, are there any other nominees? Suppose we could do that.
I did forward a resume. I don't know if Paul got it. Jason Dibble had given me a resume of an individual that was interested in serving on inland wetlands, but I don't think we've had a chance to distribute the, the resume to everybody. I did email to Paul. I guess he had a conversation with Jason the other night.
Okay, like this week, we have to make, it's been, we have to do it within 30 days, I believe, and it's coming up. But this is, that's someone who wants to serve. Okay, well, if you'd like to make a motion.
No, no. This is following procedure that we normally do. I believe that this was a Republican slot and the alternate, and this person is already an alternate on the commission. That's correct.
I think Ted Oatch may have been either a U or a D, Democrat. However, we also had someone on the commission switch from a Republican to a Democrat.
Correct.
Imbalance as well. So that's why we are righting the ship a little bit, I think.
Yes. So, but I want to make it clear that this, this technically isn't a new, a new, a truly new individual, that normally we, if there is, if there's an alternate who wishes to move up and fill a vacancy, then we generally honor that request.
Right.
And I believe that this is the procedure that we've done in the past, the advantage of having somebody fill the vacancy who has served as an alternate, who's familiar with the proceedings. And.
Yep.
Has sat, sat, sat in on the meeting, familiar with the business that it, that is at hand. And I think it's definitely an advantage to have an alternate move up to fill the vacancy.
And as an ex-official to the agency, Doreen, as long, as well as Mr. Dibble, as the other alternate, have participated in the majority, if not all of the meetings over the last year. Very good alternates, they've both been seated when they didn't have their full quorum. So I know she has been involved and is up to speed with the ongoings of the agency.
And I think, Dan, this, this would leave a vacancy as an alternate, and we could consider additional names at that point to fill the vacancy. Once, once Doreen has resigned the alternate position, which she has to do, she has to resign as an alt, did she resign? I think she has to resign first as an alternate to be moved up to the full time.
I checked that, actually, in this case, because she's on the commission, she's already a sworn member of the commission, she just would slide into the full time slot. It would, it would open up an immediate vacancy. But we are, I'm hearing for the first time, there's another name being floated out. There is one name that I know of who's interested and was in your packet, but let's, let's get to the first spot first, and then we'll talk about the, the alternate. Maybe we should do it that way. So we do have a, a motion to move Mrs. Doreen up as an alternate. And if there are no other motions or nominees, or I guess that's probably how we should have done it, but there is a motion, I'll call the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. So it does leave an alternate position, as I understand, because there's no swearing in of Mrs. Reams, who would need to, you know, remove herself as an alternate and go. That isn't the case in this case. So she's automatically a full time member as of this moment with, with the, with the motion. So it does leave an immediate opening on the alternate site. However, if there are other candidates, we could wait a meeting.
I believe we should.
Okay.
This wasn't on the, this wasn't on the agenda to fill the vacancy as an alternate, and I think that it would be appropriate to have it on our next agenda.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Yeah, so on our next agenda, which is December 2nd, we can move forward. Okay. Very good. So I congratulate, well, I congratulate all, all our servers in town, but Mrs. Ream, who will move up to a full time member. And, and thank you, Paul, for, for, for being the ex-official there. You've been carrying some heavy loads, especially this week, I've been told. And you have another meeting tomorrow night, isn't that right?
Number four this week.
Okay. You off this weekend or, because I got leaves if you want to come over and rake them.
Mine are deeper than yours, I guarantee that.
Okay, we'll go to old business then. We do have a, we do have a subcommittee focused on the fishing dock leases.
Excuse me, Mark.
Mark, we had one more for Mr. Patterson to the Brookside Farm Museum Commission.
A housekeeping.
I don't have it on my agenda.
I have it, I have it under motions. I didn't know if something, shouldn't be there, Sandy?
Probably shouldn't, and I'm sorry, I forgot the agenda was specific.
Okay.
I apologize.
As you should, and I expect lunch tomorrow as a result from you.
You got it.
December 2nd, we'll have a few people will get to move in and.
Okay.
Always love our volunteers to.
Thank you.
So we will go then, for once I'm on track, old business, the Cheney Park Subcommittee. If you all could, the subcommittee was Mr. Daigle, Mr. Siri, Mr. Salerno?
No, no, Mr. Cunningham.
Right, right. Daigle does enough. So guys, wanted to report in to us. What are you, what are you thinking?
Well, we met last week on November 11th to talk about the leases. We came up with some criteria. We've been talking about it before, and I'll read that to you a little bit of what we're, what we're looking for, and we wanted to present this to the commission to see if it's, if the commission wants to, I guess, adopt it. Basically, I'll talk about that in a second. We have, we know we have a fourth dock coming back. We're not sure exactly when it's coming back.
That's not true at all. We're not sure we're going to get a fourth dock back. That, that's under, DOT says, you're not going, we're not going to get that fourth dock back. That is under the highway system, and if that would ever catch, or a boat catches on fire, it destroys the bridge. So they have a right of way, air right of way. We're not sure we'll get that back. So I don't think we should be planning on that.
Okay, I guess that's news to us.
Yeah.
So that's unfortunate. So our recommendation that we came up with is either we were, if, if we were getting the fourth, fourth dock back would be to, one, was to extend the leases until the fourth dock became available, but you're saying that may not happen, or to extend the current leases another year. And we were talking about putting another call out for a fourth dock when it became available. That was our recommendation in the meeting. That's new news to us now that that dock may not be available, and that's unfortunate.
I, we did talk about it, but, you know, it was probably when they were planning the rebuilding of the bridge, they came down there and said, what is this dock doing here? We think we, we might get it, we, we're going to fight for it. And there's also, I've had conversations with some of the tenants down there who talked about forming a, an ad hoc subcommittee, you know, people from the public getting together and trying to create more dock space down there. And I would be in favor of supporting that. There's space in between the spaces, if you will, or we could, you know, expand that. But underneath the roadway, DOT was like, eh, don't, don't plan on having that for the long term. So we're, we'll work that out legally. I'm sorry you didn't get that information.
Yeah, I think we, I'm in favor of doing what we can to get a fourth dock down the roadway together. We have a lot of demand, a lot of applications that we've received.
Yeah.
So let me go over to the criteria that we set up to go by. We broke it up into three areas. One is usage, and we, we prefer two docks designated for charter fishing, which would include the Black Hawk dock, two docks designated for commercial fishing and aquaculture. We're trying to, we want to balance the use there. There's also some parking issues, but we also want to get some commercial fishing opportunities in there, not just charter fishing, though charter fishing is important. So we would like to split that up when we decide if we get that fourth dock. Another criteria is tenure, existing leases, and we have five criterias that need to be met. Pays fees on time, provides reasonable maintenance to dock as needed, no substantiated written complaints from prior year, uses dock regularly, and good upkeep of site. So we're looking for someone that's pretty much using this full time, taking care of it, and keeping good upkeep of it, and we're not getting complaints. And then preferences is three, and I think everyone, this is in your packet. The last one is residency, Eastline Business Owners residency is what we prefer. Applicants, be applicants that offer upgrades to docks and facilities. If we have applicants that are willing to upgrade the docks, that may be preferential. And then C, well, obviously, I mentioned before, full time business operations. So we were trying to get down on paper what we've been looking at as a committee each time, so that it is known, if the board of selectmen decides to approve this, what we're, what we're looking for and what our priorities are going to be and preferences are going to be when we have applicants come in.
Okay.
Paul and Dan, please comment as, if I missed anything or if you want to add anything, please.
I, I.
Hi.
Go ahead, Dan.
No, I did, I think you've done a good job of, we're trying to explain what our thinking is and making it visible in the interest of transparency to those that are interested in being down there. Unfortunately, as, as it came out, one of our assumptions was that there would be the four docks available. So if in fact, we only have three, we may have to revisit, you know, our usage criteria down the road. That's all I.
Well, do you want to, do you want to postpone this until the next meeting so you can work through that or?
Let's have more discussion at least.
And if there's only going to be three docks or an odd number, someday there's five, six, or seven, we could work on the wording that says, you know, we want to have distribution of commercial fishing and charter fishing. But our recommendation is that we, we reserve that right for businesses that are operating that, you know, need those facilities to operate, vice individuals who, you know, want more of their boat there for the season.
Right. We understand that there's some uses that are shown at local marinas, so we, we want to try to provide opportunities for, for charter and for personal fishermen that may not fit in that category for the local mariners.
Are there any hard no's? If someone were not making 51% of their income, would that be a hard no? If someone, if a third, third charter boat came in, would that be a hard no? I think with parking, I think there has to be a hard no. I, I just, I'm wondering if you guys had a conversation about, especially income, that this is a true fisherman or fishing business, and the income of that individual is, is, is focused on this?
We, we chose not to use the word income, but it was a full time business. We didn't want someone who was maybe just operating one or two days a week vice, you know, five days a week or five or more days a week. We wanted it to be a place for businesses to be able to execute, you know, who knows? They could be part owner of another business and more of their income could somewhere, but they spend, you know, they operate full time here. We didn't want.
That's the balance. Is it, is it a hobby business or is it a, a lifeline business? And that's where my, my question back to the subcommittee is, it goes, any other questions?
I think that, sort of along that same line, Mark, is, yeah, 51% is hard to say, but is it considered a, you know, a source of income for a family? Because here again, some people work part time, and if someone's putting in, you know, 24 hours a week, and it's providing 25% of your household income, that, that's a significant piece of, you know, money coming in. So, you know, I think Paul had it fairly well described there.
One, one thing to consider, and we don't have to come through that tonight, but I believe that two of the three leases come due at the end of this year. So as we come to our next meeting, we'll have to decide on, because we haven't solicited applications for this year, we have the ones from last year. We'll have to consider how we want to address, either extend the existing leases for another year, and then solicit additional applications. That's what's our thought process if the fourth dock was going to become available. But we should all think about how we want to address that in December so we can let the current tenants know some, some amount of notice, how we plan on proceeding with their existing leases for next year.
Okay. There is an application in our packets. We could start the application process if, if we are coming up at the end of leases at the end of December, that's going to come up quick.
Yeah, do you have to notice in the paper and so on and so forth for all that?
I'm not sure if we, I don't know, we could do it on our website. Sandy has maintained a list of interested people anyway. I think our list is, you know, four times as long as the availability, availability of space. So I don't think, we'll have trouble getting the word out of people who have been interested. And again, she's maintained a list, so we could, we could put that list out, we could put it on the website too, and, and make sure people know that we are soliciting for those, or an application for those who might want to lease.
Yeah, I, I think we want to be careful to be sure that we post sufficient and adequate notice, because these are sought after, and I don't think we want to be criticized for not doing it the right way. So maybe we should look at, make sure it's done how we're supposed to do it.
Yeah, we're, well, we're kind of, you know, I don't know if there's a statute on something like this, it's just trying to be fair, and I think we decide what's fair and equitable. We could put a notice in the paper. You know, I, I don't know if anybody gets the paper anymore, frankly. I don't know if that's the most equitable way. Certainly, half the people that bought, the paper distribution is down by 50% to, to 10 years ago. So we'll definitely have it on our website. We have a list of, gosh, 10 or 12 people who are interested. If you, what are your thoughts, Dan?
Well, I don't, maybe we could rotate it through the electronic sign.
Sure, that's a good point, electronic signs. That's something we. Now, it's something we generally use it for, but, you know, it could be part of the rotation for, for a week, and get that notice out.
Yeah, I think that would be a way that most people driving down to the docks probably go past the town hall, so.
Sure.
That's a good way to do it.
A laminated, even a laminated eight and a half by, you know, eight by 11 piece of paper stapled to a couple of the fishing dock poles down there, you know, that we could work up on a, on a word perfect, and just go down there and laminate it and staple it for a couple of weeks.
So if we do proceed that way, it'll be incumbent on getting the applications in, having the Cubs Committee review them, and then come back to the board of selectmen with a recommendation on which leases to accept, which application to accept, which will have to be done by the, our second meeting in December.
So maybe, go ahead.
It would be helpful if, if there was feedback, or if everyone agreed with the dock leasing selection criteria, it would be something that we could put out so people would know what to expect.
If we agreed to it tonight?
If the board of selectmen's okay with it, that would be helpful to the subcommittee.
I like your criteria. Pays fees on time, I mean, we don't have, there was a time where that wasn't the case. Provides reasonable maintenance as needed, and no substantial written complaints. We've gotten some verbals, but nothing written and nothing formal. Uses the dock regularly, that would go back to not a hobby fisherman, but someone who's in business, and this is his business, his or her business. And then the fifth one was good upkeep of the site, and I got to tell you, all the tenants have been pretty, pretty good at that lately. References, residency, applicants that offered to upgrade the dock and facilities, we've had some of that from time to time, and full-time business operations is, you know, that's, we can at least weigh how much it's a full-time versus a part-time, versus a hobby, versus a seasonal. There's nothing wrong with that, we're in New England. So I, I think that's a good way of weighing that. I, I agree with, with the work of the subcommittee, which I.
I would agree with that too. Obviously, number one, the usage will change a little bit because of the, not, no guarantee on that fourth dock right now, but.
Right.
As far as the tenure and the preferences, I think that's a really nice, shows a lot of thought and effort on the subcommittee's.
I'd recommend, number one, be changed to a mixed usage of charter and commercial fishing.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Or aquaculture, get all three of them in there.
We could add up to two docks designated for charter fishing.
That's what I'd recommend.
That should cover us, I think.
Yeah, up to two docks. We couldn't take any more than that down there with the parking situation, especially while the construction's going on, and we're short 30 spaces.
Yeah, so if we change it to up to two docks for A and B, is that something we could get the commission's approval on?
You mean the board of selectmen, not the commission of selectmen?
The board of, yeah, the board of selectmen.
I think you have consensus there.
Do you want a motion, Mark? I mean, it'd probably be better for you got one of, the subcommittee people to make a motion if you'd like, though. Because I don't, because there's none prepared, and.
So I, maybe a motion to accept the, the selection criteria as presented and as amended.
I'll move that, yeah, I'll move, this, Ken, sir, I'll move that.
I'll second.
Good work, Dan. Are there any, is there, is there any other, are there any, are there any other comments? Oof, a long day. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained?
Sandy, I'll work with you tomorrow on getting that wording down, perfect.
We'll make the applications, for the record, we're going to make the applications available beginning Monday, Sandy, or can you get these ready tomorrow by noon?
They're ready. They can go out whenever, we're not going to change them.
And then if we. Send them out electronically, we can fax them, we can pick them up, we can mail them. We'd like them back. Do you want to have them back by the 4th of December? There is a holiday in the middle there. You folks might get 10 applications for two slots, and you, you need to have time to work on this.
Can we ask Sandy, can we have Sandy attach that, the criteria to the application?
I'd agree with that.
And just to note, if you're existing, please, please address some of these issues. It's in your best interest to address some of these.
And we'll, we know who the existing are, obviously, but yeah, and please, please attach all the necessary documentation that it asks for, there's three things it's asking for you to follow up on. We'll attach the selection criteria, we'll make the applications ready by, let's just say by noon tomorrow. You can call the first selectman's office, 691-4110, come on in, or email sanderson@eltownhall.com, and she can electronically send it out to you. Again, when would you like these back by, guys? Do you want them back before the next meeting? The 2nd or the 4th? It's 6, like, the 7th is a Monday, and you guys can meet as a subcommittee that week, and then report back in the second meeting in December with your selection.
I think the fourth gives, gives the applicants time to get it together. It'll give us a week after they're in to have a meeting and review them, and come to, back to the board. Meetings on the 16th, the second meeting's on the 16th, right?
16th.
Yeah.
16th.
Dan, do you guys feel comfortable with that timeframe?
I think that shows Mingo's background.
Yeah, no, I'm in favor of that, that sounds like good timing.
Yep, that works.
Very good.
So what date did you say?
The 4th.
The 4th is a Friday.
Yep, then Sandy can get them to the subcommittee, and we'll meet the following week, and then be prepared to make a recommendation.
Terrific.
For the board, for our second meeting.
Thank you.
Mark, the application I have in, cannot stay in, or do I have to make a new one?
New applications.
All right, so you have to make a new one, the one that's in there doesn't count?
It's an updated application, January 1st of 2021, lasting one year.
Okay.
And I think we just approved it tonight, so it's a new application. Looking for more documentation, too. So, yeah, we'll, we'll allow that, that question. Any other, any other points on this? Good work, selectmen, this is always a little difficult. Hopefully, we can get to a place where we're giving out three-year leases, and, and I, and we'll, we'll do some work in this next year of determining whether we're going to have that fourth dock or not, and, and go from there.
Yeah, that would be important, try to get the state to reconsider that.
Understand. Was, was there any communications in our pack tonight? I don't believe so. So, so moving on to executive official reports, who'd like to go, anybody?
I had Parks and Rec last week, Dave gave a rough first go-around of his proposed budget just to his commission members, asking for their input. He did indicate there's going to be one retirement, Carol, who's going to, Ben, there forever, and the program coordinator, is going to be retiring come June 30th, so one person leaving there. And that's about it, that's all, that was a major highlight of that event. And the fact that basically, a lot of stuff is just not happening, but I'm sure you'll be talking about the light parade and so forth like that, Mark, so I won't go into that.
Sure. Mr. Dagel, you've been busy.
I'll start off with the building commission. The kickoff meeting with the contractor was held last week, Noble Construction. The next building committee meeting, it's tomorrow evening. They have received the schedule of executing the work. It currently identifies a mid-June of 2021 as a completion date. They've started preliminary demo inside the building. They will be concentrating inside over the winter months, and then comes the April timeframe, they'll work on the outside upgrades, and including breaking through the roof to support the elevator shaft. So seem to be all ready to go. In our last meeting, he had a couple of subcontractors left to get underway, but in very good shape, and they should be up to full-speed work here shortly. So that's all I had on the building committee. Harbor Management and Shellfish Commission, they were, Mr. Selectman, First Selectman, sir, they were very appreciative of your interaction on this disputed boundary between the town of East Lime and Waterford and the river, whether it's in the channel, or whether it's in the geometrical center of the river, and also a potential removal of east line control moorings that are on the other side of the contested order. So they appreciated your working with the first selectman from Waterford to leave the east line moorings alone until the towns can come to a mutual agreement on where is the actual property boundary. So that was their main item. They also have, haven't found yet, but they've, they've tried to find an indoor storage place for their harbor master boat in town. They talked with Public Works, but they haven't been able to, they say they don't have the room, so if they can't find anything, they're going to continue to look, they probably have to just wrap it up. But they would like to keep the boat available for an emergency. Obviously, if you store it outside and shrink wrap it, it's not going to be available for emergency, so they're going to look at some options there. And the last item they talked about is the pump, the, the fee for pumping out, the pump-out boat. It's been split different ways in the past. I think last year, Wellsco took care of it, and we'll have to figure out how it's going to be paid for between the town of Waterford, Wellsco, and the town of East Lime. So more to follow on that, they just had a preliminary discussion with no, no decision. And finally, the inland wetlands agency met the other evening, they passed the resolution to increase the distance of the upland review area from 100 to 300 feet. And that resolution, now we'll go change their, I want to say bylaws, but not their bylaws, their.
Regulations.
Regulations. And they also had a public hearing on the Harvest Church that wants to build off of North Bridebrook Road. They've continued that public hearing. There was quite a bit of, I'll say, opposition voiced in the public hearing by adjoining property owners, which is usually expected when someone wants to develop a piece of property. And the applicant representative wanted to take the time to prepare, you know, his rebuttal to the comments and concerns that were raised by the, by the neighboring property owners, so they continued that to their next meeting in December. And I think that's enough, so thank you.
It's not enough, you have a meeting tomorrow night, too, so.
Right.
Thank you for your service to the town, Paul.
My pleasure.
We'll catch you next time. Mr. Salerno?
Yeah, real quick, Library Met, they're already doing their budget, they're looking at a 2% budget increase for next year, so that will be coming soon. The planning commission was able to celebrate a little bit, they passed a POCD, so there was a lot of relief, there was a lot of hard work that went into that, and that is now passed on to the state. They, they also had two other applications, a three-lot subdivision up in, up near Aquapad against it road, that was delayed. There was a lot of complaints from the applicants about the timeliness of Leguilla Health District getting back to them on, on their applications. And then there was a two-lot subdivision in, or one-lot re-subdivision in Blackpoint, and both of those were pushed, well, were opened and continued to the next public, the next meeting, which is in December.
Okay.
And Paul's covered.
Okay, good, thank you, Mark, thank you. Mrs. Hardy, are you jumping in?
Yep, yep, we heard from commission on aging earlier, they met Monday night and had the discussion on the issue that was brought up to us tonight on the bus. Zoning meets tomorrow night, their previous meetings where they had public hearings where there's a lot of people attending online, and that's, that's it for right now.
Great, and Mr. Cunningham, we didn't forget you, there you are.
No, actually, I, I have nothing to report, just.
How's everything, how's life going, Dan?
Life's good.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Right of it all.
Actually, we have a conflict with the, not the Swift Harris House, but the, whatever the new, the new name, Brookside Farm.
Brookside Farm.
Meeting during this meeting, so I'm going to have to get that adjusted with them somehow.
At some point, yeah, because they, they like to be supported, but I do remember there's always a conflict with them.
Yeah, so let's see if I can get that moved, because I don't.
Yeah. We'll dock their pay if they don't move their meeting.
There you go.
Good, it's a good group. They, I'll tell you that the Brookside Farm, they finished the front porch.
Yeah.
And, and they're very proud of that, Gary Lakowski called my office and, the other day, and I don't want to jump on your, step on your toes here, Dan, but where you're missing the meeting, I know they're sitting in a meeting right now talking about how successful their project was. And if, I know Roseanne and I went out to a trivia night, a couple, what was, must have been about a year ago, it was pre-COVID, and there was a big giant step to get up, to get into the house, and that has all been fixed, and, and they've done great work out there, so my, my appreciation to those volunteers. For, for selectman's report, I don't have anything written down, we do have the holiday stroll coming up, I believe it starts around midday, like 11 or 12 o'clock on the Saturday after Thanksgiving, that's the 28th of November. We're encouraging townspeople to come on downtown, shop, start your Christmas shopping, and there will be some festive things going on. I think Sandy is going to ride through town, there will be a tree lighting, but not that, not the massive people on the town green for obvious reasons, everything is going to get changed up a little bit, but we're going to have the town decorated, and there'll be, you know, carolers out there and special, specials going on, maybe some food trucks and all the things that we do. But it's going to be shifted to an afternoon event, so 11 to 7, I believe, is the time. There will be a holiday light parade, Kevin alluded to it, we'll talk about it the next meeting. It will be a reverse light parade, whereas the floats will stay still, and the people will drive by the floats in their cars, safe with their cohort and family and friends or whatever. So we're going to have a trail of cars going through McCook's Park with floats lined up on either side, and we encourage those businesses that have participated in the past, come on out and do it again. In fact, you can do it big, because you can get, you know, the mother of all generators parked out there and really light it up. It could be the Clark Woods Ball on Christmas out there, because you don't have to be confined to whatever power comes off your car battery, or the little, the little generator that might fit, you know, under a box in your, in your, in your pickup. So there you go, that's going to come up on the 12th of December. I don't have the times yet, it will be, you know, as soon as it gets dark and until the last person goes through the line, probably, and we're, we're working on that. My, my hat's off to Parks and Rec for putting that together there. We have amazing, an amazing group up there. Other things kicking around, but we'll, we'll talk about some of that stuff in executive session, personnel and land things, and land purchase situation, and public comment. Anyone like to speak to the commission tonight? Mr. Mingo, you were, you were muted, you don't have your hand raised that you want to talk about, I had to mute you because there was some noise in the background earlier. Anybody, Marjorie?
No, I'm listening, thank you.
You're just making noise.
Yeah, I'm making noise.
You're dangling around, okay, great. Anyone else?
I'll comment, Mark.
Yes.
I want to comment on the dock situation, and thank everyone for their hard work on that, because I think it's been something that's been going on for a long time and hasn't had the right set of criteria. So I'm glad that got done. Regarding the fourth dock, I know there was some discussion early on about a landing dock for boats, so if we can't keep a boat at the fourth dock, would there be the possibility to keep that fourth dock for loading and offloading? Because what, like, actually, keeping a commercial boat isn't the biggest problem, it's the loading and offloading, and the availability to get the gear that's on the boat to, like a truck or something, easily. That's one of the bigger problems, like, some of the boats can stay on moorings, the boats could be at a dock that would allow the boat to be there, but they don't want the commercial gear going up and down the dock. So I just thought I'd throw that out there as you're negotiating with the. out there as you're negotiating with the state, if they'd allow loading and offloading.
Okay. We, I, there's an opportunity for me to respond if there's no other public comment. I'll do just under Selectman's response. Anyone else? Okay. So I'll go to Selectman's response. It's a good point, Kyle. Thanks for bringing that up. There is a fourth dock down there we're not supposed to lease out, and I gave the area fishermen who don't have a lease now, the approval to come up to the dock and load and unload, as was just described. And maybe that will still be an opportunity. And I think it's the general leaving a boat there docked full-time, except when they're out to sea, that the DOT would probably have the hardest time. But an on-and-off loading-unloading situation may still be available. And there was a group of folks that was organized, that they, they all signed up, and they were allowed to do that. So we'll try to keep that flowing as much as possible. Okay? That's a good point. So next on our agenda is an executive session.
Okay, Kevin, sir, I'll move to enter into executive session at 8:23 PM on 11/18/2020 for the purpose of discussing real estate and personnel issues.
Mark Salerno second.
Mark Salerno seconds. Very good. All in favor, say aye.
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 By Andy and by Kyle, we're going to go into executive session.